All right. Thank you all for that. And too bad we didn't get to hear from the retired pastor, but that's what happens when you retire. Anyhow, I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. If you'll all join in the Salute Our Nation slide, please. Ready, begin.
Our pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the clerk will call the role and declarations of conflicts of interest, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes and none.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes and none.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes and no.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Here and no conflicts.
Mayor Boo Black?
Here and nothing. Okay, thank you for that. Approval of agenda as posted or amended?
Motion to amend, Mayor. I need to ask to move item 8D behind Proclamations and Recognitions.
That's a motion? Second. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boo Black?
Yes, passes 5-0. Thank you for that. So that will start us on our recognitions, which we have many. We've got great staff. All right. All right, Ms. Werner, you coming up here?
Did you want any of your family to be up with you? Or do you want to stand by yourself? You good? You can come over here if you don't want your back to the people.
I'll come over there, right?
Yeah, come. It's all right. You can be wherever you want to be. You're the employee of the year. That's right, folks. Let's give her a hand in a match, right? So we're just a tiny bit behind, but we are catching up. So this is Employee of the Year for 2021. This is Adrienne Werner, and she's a senior planner for the Planning Department. And she began working for the city in September of 1999, and she's celebrating her 23rd year working in the Planning Division in September. It'll be 23 years. She spent 10 years as a planning technician, learning about city planning in the city of Turlock in particular, and she was promoted to Senior Planner in 2019 and continues to serve in that position today. I can actually remember being on Planning Commission with you. Yeah. Her peers have the following to say about her. Adrienne is an outstanding employee who needs to be recognized for her dedication to her work, not only in the Planning Department, but in the whole city. She runs all of the pre-development meetings each week and is always available to help whatever, wherever she is needed. She takes on any challenge head-on and goes above and beyond what is asked of her, whether it is an internal employee or a customer. Her dedication to her work shows that the late hours she puts in to get the job done. The Planning Division has been short-staffed for a long time, and Adrienne has had to take on extra work, which she has done with no complaint. Her commitment to her job is far beyond excellent and deserves to be recognized. Some of her personal hobbies are: Adrienne has been married to her husband Ron for 33 years. They gave one son Ryan and her grandchildren Brayden and Marley. Adrienne and Ron enjoy traveling, fishing, playing golf, and spending time with their family. Family game nights can get pretty boisterous. We got bruises? Her most recent hobby is gardening with her granddaughter. I'm honored to have been chosen, this is Adrienne's response, has been chosen Employee of the Year. I'm privileged to work with a great group of people whose goal is to make Turlock a great place to live and work. Their integrity, professionalism, and willingness to help makes my job easier. Teamwork really does make the dream work. I give to you the Employee of the Year 2021, Adrienne Werner.
Thank you. It was quite a surprise, but I truly am honored, and I do work with a wonderful group of people, not only in this building, but out at the yard. Whenever I have questions, everybody's always there to help answer questions, or if they can't find it, we find someone who can help us. So I am honored to work for the city for as long as I have, and I am just very honored and embarrassed that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now catching up, we have employees who aspire to be the Employee of the Year. We're going with this. Employee of the Month. Sorry. We've got to get to the picture. Is Ian there? Ian, you coming up? You don't have to stand alone if you... You good? You good? All right. All right, so this is January Employee of the Month, and this is Police Officer Ian Rodriguez. Ian started with the city of Turlock in June of 2005 with the Police Department. His peers have the following to say about him. Officer Ian Rodriguez has been working as TPD's only Neighborhood Resource Officer since February of 2021. Since being assigned to this position, he has spent the majority of his time working on illegal homeless encampments, homeless issues and complaints, and general quality of life issues. Ian comes to work with a great attitude every day through, though there's no easy solution to the issues he's dealing with. Ian has been the backbone of this effort. He has numerous daily contacts with the homeless. He treats people with respect and is able to balance compassion with enforcement needs. Ian has developed relationships with the homeless community. He has also developed relationships with personnel from local and city and county resources. Ian is able to connect the homeless community with resources they are seeking. He spends much of his time in a police uniform, which he's donned now, doing manual labor, cleaning up trash to make the city a nicer place to live. He takes pride in keeping the city as clean as possible. I believe if you ask anyone who has been paying attention, the city of Turlock looks nothing like it did in February of 2021. This is in huge part to Ian's effort. He is a great asset to the Turlock Police Department and the city of Turlock. Some of his personal hobbies are anything outdoors, particularly fishing, kayaking, and trap shooting. His days off are spent with his wife Jennifer and his three teen boys who are active in either school sports or trap shooting as well. A message from James. Hmm. You want to change your name? Ian, I remain thankful for the city of Turlock and the Turlock Police Department for hiring me and allowing me to serve the citizens of Turlock. I give to you January 2022 Employee of the Month.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it very much. Whoever, I'm suspecting it's my sergeant, he hasn't confirmed it or denied it yet, that sponsor or recommended me, there you go, for this. You pretty much went over my assignment with the quality of life issues that I've been dealing with since February of last year, but I want to thank some people individually, like it would not have been possible without their help. So Christian Kirby at the Gospel Mission, Debbie at We Care, Helping Hands with Elizabeth Padilla, the care team with Raoul Dominguez and his people with the San Sos County Probation Department, they're doing really good work in trying to connect people with services, and I appreciate their help very much, and the city should be thankful for them as well. Ray Garcia with the city of Turlock in Parks and Rec, their guys are working really hard. We've teamed up with them on Fridays to go around and clean up, and their guys are constantly in the parks and in the streets dealing with some of the fallout and the quality of life issues, and without them, it would look very different out there. Neighborhood Services, recently retired Fire Marshal Mark Gomez was dealing with a lot of issues, and his staff, Ryan and Insignia, are now under the Police Department. So I want to mention two tow companies, particularly Donnie Calso with Calso's Tow, and Aldo and Mike for e-towing. The amount of work that they're doing for the city is really appreciative, and I had to mention them specifically. There's some good Samaritans that are doing some good work out there. I'm not going to mention them by name, but I will say Grime Fighters are Grime De Shine. I won't mention them specifically because they've asked me not to. They know who they are, and they're doing very good work out there, and they're cleaning up the streets of Turlock as well. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, February 2022, Laura Williams. All right. Laura has previously worked as a dispatcher for the Turlock Police Department for 10 years before returning again as a dispatcher in April of 2018. Her peers have the following to say about her. Laura can be counted on to assist her peers whenever they need assistance. She is dedicated to ensuring that the Communication Center is working smoothly and the staffing levels are always met. She understands that helping the individuals on the other end of the phone is one of her most important responsibilities of her job that she takes very seriously. Some of her personal hobbies... Uh-oh, we got accompaniment. We're going to find out about personal hobbies. The most important part of my life is my family. My family is very supportive, and I wouldn't be here where I am today without. I love spending time with my son Jacob, am I, is that present this area? And watching him play baseball. It is so fun to watch his skills grow. I spend a lot of time with my parents, my sister and her kids. When I am not at work, we're hanging around my family. I love being at home and hanging out with my son and my animals. I have dogs and hairless cats that I love. Well, we got to talk later. Okay. A message from Laura. I love my fellow dispatchers and how we all have such a great team. The group of ladies I work with are always there for one another, whether it be their shift needs to be covered or just a friend or shoulder to lean on. I'm proud to work for this agency and with the amazing team of men and women at Turlock Police Department. I'm so blessed to be employed as a lead dispatcher at Turlock Police. I give you February 2022 Employee of the Month, Laura Williams.
All I have to say is that I thought I was going to be up here with my partner in crime, who will be up here next, I think.
You want to stay up here for her?
Do I? Yes. We became leads together. We got this together. We're a package deal, so...
But she's in different month.
She is. But I didn't know that. Luckily, I have this guy.
One more round of applause. You going to stay up here, and who are you encouraging to come up now? Kaitlyn? Come on. Yeah, go get her. Okay. All right, March 2022, Kaitlyn. All right. She began working as dispatcher for Turlock Police Department in February of 2017. Kaitlyn's a very outgoing person who loves to assist her peers. She takes her time, training role, very seriously and enjoys helping the individuals who call into the Communication Center. She is always extremely helpful and ensures the Communication Center is always fully staffed. She often comes in on her days off just to assist whenever assistance is needed. Some of her personal hobbies: The most important thing in my life is my family. I recently got married, and my husband is very supportive and encouraging with everything that comes with this line of work. When I'm not working, I enjoy playing with my dogs, traveling, and doing anything outdoors, including camping and off-roading. Oh, and Disneyland is my happy place. A message from Kaitlyn. I love being a dispatcher because I love coming to work every day not knowing what's going to happen. It keeps the days exciting. I work with absolute best group of women and couldn't ask for better people to spend 12 hours a day with. Being a lead dispatcher comes with great responsibility, but I couldn't be prouder to work with the men and women of Turlock PD. Kaitlyn, congratulations.
So I think I speak on behalf of Laura and I that we couldn't do our jobs without the girls that aren't here, and including our boss, Mayor. Well, she's the most supportive supervisor we've ever had, and again, we enjoy working for the PD, but we couldn't do it without the girls that aren't here and that are actually working right now, so thank you.
All right. That's a lot of awesome employees right there. Okay, let's get to 8D. Here we are, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Raoul, did you want to do something? Oh, let's do that. I'm sorry, I was got all excited about the employees, and I forgot that you're important too. Come on up, Raoul. You can either... Are you doing a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, then go ahead over there. Oh, Lord, okay. I should read this closer next time. Love Turlock's next, I promise.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Raoul Dominguez. I am the manager of the care team with the probation department. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to speak a little bit about our team and some of the services we're providing for the county and here for the city of Turlock. This is a picture of our team at our latest Turlock pop-up event, which we had last week to try to provide services to the homeless community here in Turlock and try to engage and build a relationship with them to get them to want to accept the services that we are providing. So a brief history about what the care team is. The care team started back in 2018, and it was to address vacancy and issues that we were having in the community with people that were in distress, having mental health issues, substance use disorders, issues that were leading to quality of life arrests and quality of life complaints from citizens. So on January 26, 2018, San Sos County Board of Supervisors approved the Community Assessment, Response, and Engagement Team, which is our care team, multidisciplinary team, to engage these individuals who we have identified as having the most calls for service, most calls for 5150s holds, and are having the most arrests in our community. So when this first started, this partnership was with the city of Modesto, and we started in downtown Modesto and then the McHenry Corridor. So we had a list of 143 clients, which were referred to us from the Modesto Police Department, and these individuals were the ones that were the highest utilizers of police contact, like 5150 and arrests in those areas. So this is a bit of the design of what CARE was designed to do. So what it is, it's a team that has everyone involved, basically, here in the county. So we have Behavioral Health and Recovery Services on the team, community service agencies, health services agencies. We have connections to aging and veteran services. And then we also have a public defender, district attorney, and we work together with the city of Modesto, city managers, and the Modesto Police Department to start addressing some of these issues. So this was the original design of the team. And what we looked at as a team is to look at accessing supportive services for the individuals that we're working with, so trying to engage these individuals that were involved in the criminal justice system. And when I say involved, many of them have minor crimes, and most of them are quality of life crimes, right? So like illegal trespassing, illegal camping, things that weren't rising to the level of really spending much time in jail. So the design of the team is to deal with these individuals by giving them supportive services, so linking them to behavioral health treatment, healthcare. So we have a public health nurse who will link them to a primary care physician. So some of them that we had, they had, say, medical issues, and we're going over to the ER for issues that probably would be handled by a primary care physician, or they'd be deteriorating in their health because they wouldn't go to their follow-up appointments. So this is one thing that we worked on as a team to try to address these issues. And the other part of it, so with the care team, is that we have not just the services, but also the accountability part. So that's where law enforcement partners come into it. So having a Modesto police sergeant and a Modesto police officer to address the issues that were coming with. If you do not want to accept services, there's still some accountability to it. So we're here to help you out, here to provide the services with the care team. However, if you do not want these social services that we're here to provide you, you're still going to have to deal with what it is to be cited for illegal camping, for trespassing. That's going to continue. So what we were trying to do is success of our team is holding people accountable and to report on the successes, on interventions by the referral and their agencies by showing a reduction in calls for service, a reduction in 5150s, and a reduction in arrests with these 143 individuals. So this was the program design for CARE 1.0. So when it first started in 2018, we had CARE 1.0, which was to facilitate, identify assessments and linkage of homeless individuals to housing and supportive services within San Sos County. This was the original design of the team, so we had a care manager who was from the probation department, a mental health coordinator from the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department, a Modesto police officer, a Modesto police sergeant, a deputy probation officer, a mental health clinician, a family service specialist from community service agency who is able to provide CalFresh and Medi-Cal services to our individuals, get them linked, so then our public health nurse can then link them to their primary care physician or medical appointments. Peer navigator, so a peer navigator is someone with some lived experience who can relate to these individuals and try to build that trust to get them to, well, not only empathizes with them, but also knows how to navigate them through the system and help them out of the situation that they're in. And then we had behavioral health specialists, two of them on the team, who worked on linking them also to behavioral health programs within the county, and then an SUD counselor. And along with that, we have a deputy public defender and deputy district attorney that we work with. So one of the things that's kind of unique to the team is the probation officer on the team meets with the district attorney and the public defender when we're having individuals that are on our caseload or that we're working with who have legal matters, and the legal matters are starting to become barriers for their success or for them to work on their treatment. So as long as they're working with us, a lot of the times, the cases will be put over and then for continuances to make sure that they keep following along with the team, and if they follow along with the team, many times the cases will get dismissed. So a little bit about what the design with CARE 1.0 was, the main portion of it was to do outreach and engagement. So what outreach and engagement really means is going out and connecting with those individuals in the community, right? Going to provide the services where they are. Instead of having them come to us, you know, which was not working or traditionally doesn't work with a homeless population, we went to where they were and tried to provide the services, try to gain their trust and help them in crisis. So respond to crisis situations, respond to individuals who are dealing with a mental health issue at that point, and being able to have mental health counselors that can go provide intervention at that immediate moment that they needed it. And also being able to provide direct services or direct connection to our county services to do follow-up and help them through this process. So as we did this, one thing that we noticed was missing was the case management portion. So when you really talk about outreach and engagement, outreach and engagement is the portion of where I go out or we go out and we see someone, that's outreach, right? So we provide sometimes some incentives. Hey, would you like some water? Would you like a snack? Something to get you to buy into the services that we have. And once they're bought in and they're like, yes, we want the services, they're engaged, then that's really the end of outreach and engagement. But the follow-up comes with case management, the follow-up to make sure that they're making their appointments, that they are following up with their medication, that they're following up with the DMV for an ID to get the California identification, or even housing applications. So as we noticed that there was a need for this, we looked at how do we address this issue? And to address it, we came up with what's called CARE 2.0. So CARE 2.0 is our case management portion of the care team, and that came about in June of 2021. The Board of Supervisors approved the expansion of the care team with the CARE 2.0 portion of it, and this is funded through the Community Corrections Partnership. CARE 2.0 case management monitors and assists individuals navigate through the system to make sure that they're receiving the services that are correct for them, and also that they're making the appointments that they need to do, and really just following up with them. So one of the things that we noticed is I can go ahead and take someone to the DMV, which can take an hour or two to receive their identification or to get their applications in, and if I don't sit there with them for those two hours, they'll walk out and get out, all right? So what we do is we stay with them. Same thing with housing applications. Some housing applications are 20 to 30 pages long. The individuals we're dealing with were not able to fill them out, so we sat there, we sit there with them, and we make sure that we complete those applications. So the goal of the team is to reduce homelessness, reduce incarceration, hospitalizations, and occurrence of public and antisocial behavior, as well as improving their overall physical and behavioral health. So this is the design of what the care team is now, currently. So we have CARE 1.0 on the left side, and on the right side is CARE 2.0, which is managed still by the care manager myself. However, we have a mental health coordinator over the team, two mental health clinicians, four behavioral health specialists who work as case managers. So they, as CARE 1.0 starts addressing the outreach and engagement portion of the team, when these members of, or these individuals that they're dealing with need case management, we refer them over to CARE 2.0. So one thing I felt to mention a little bit ago was, when we do a mental health assessment, if a client is SMI, which is severely mentally ill, they're linked to Behavioral Health Services. So Behavioral Health Services has case managers, and they have their own teams to help people navigate through the system. What we noticed is, as we're doing mental health assessments, we're conducting them on our clients, many of them did not meet the SMI criteria, so there was still that need for case management, and that's where CARE 2.0 falls in to provide the case management. And also on the team, we have a data analyst, crime analyst, who provides data and also gives us some link, kind of gauging our success, but at the same time, being able to identify trends or areas where we need to focus a lot of our attention, and also what it is, what services are the ones that individuals are mostly taking on and what services are being the most successful. So I just wanted to touch upon a few of our success stories. This is Brad's story. This is a story we featured on YouTube. Brad was homeless for over two and a half years. He was a truck driver. He lost his wife and his son in a tragic car accident, and from there, he drove his truck from North Carolina down into Modesto, crashed. Once he crashed his vehicle, his life just kind of spiraled out of control. He started abusing drugs, and then he ended up on the streets. So for two and a half years, he was on the streets. When we met him with the care team, our substance use disorder counselor met with him, helped him receive services, and gotten him into treatment. So as soon as he started taking on treatment, his, you know, started doing really well, started, life started looking up for him. We got him off the streets. He's been now sober for one year. He's a long-haul truck driver for Tesla. He's actually the first Tesla driver for a self-driven truck. So because he knows how to drive in bad weather, he drives that, he's in the vehicle as it's driving itself to make sure that he needs to, if he needs to correct anything. We reconnected him with his family. One of the things that's really touching about his story is his only goal was to hold his grandson. He had a new grandson that he had never held, and through assistance from the care team and getting him to the programs that he needed, we have a picture of him holding his grandson. So he's made a lot of progress within a year. He purchased a new trailer and is living on his family's property in Los Angeles and kind of travels throughout the country, you know, driving trucks. This is something that's a testament to what the team can do when somebody really wants to buy into the services. We have another care client. So this individual was dealing with several issues. He was homeless for several years. When we received his referral to the care team, he had the most calls for service out of that 143 list. And between 2017 and 2021, he had over, he had 20 arrests for quality of life issues. His last arrest was in 2021. After his release from jail, county jail, he decided to accept services from the team, and now he's been clean and sober for over a year. He's employed, is paying for his own housing. He's been reconnected with his family. He also had years that he'd not seen his children, and his last Mother's Day was the first time that he actually spent with his three children, teenage boys. He hasn't had any arrests since 2021, and recently, this is one of the things that we work with, with the probation officer. He had 11 cases that were still outstanding that were all dismissed two weeks ago. So just give you guys a little bit of some data from the care team. Here's a number of contacts that we have with individuals. So these are individual contacts with the care clients that we have on the team. This doesn't account for also other individuals that we contact. So when we're out in an encampment, per se, and we're dealing with someone who is homeless... So when we're out in an encampment per se, and we're dealing with someone who is homeless, a lot of times, it's not just them that need the service or who will take the service. We call it a plus one, right? So it's, I'm not going to go with you unless my girlfriend comes with me and my good friend comes with me. So in order for us to really be successful, we wrap around the whole group and we try providing services to all of them to try to get, to try to have some success with, with the individual. So since 2022, we've added 24 additional clients to our care list. That's 89 clients we have actively served through care and 206 clients served to date. So these are just some of the numbers that we've had since CARE 2.0 has been engaged. So total, we've had 206 clients to the care team since its inception. 30 clients have been connected to treatment teams. So that means that they've been connected to the correct treatment team with BHRS and receiving full, what's called full service partnership treatment and case management from those teams. 22 clients have been housed. So this means that they're already housed, they have their own place, they're, most of them are either paying their own rent or have subsidized housing. And then two clients we've had issued emergency housing, which was recently two of our Turlock clients. So some of the stuff that we do also outreach and engagement at the encampments. Well, this is a picture of the encampment there on West Main. We did this May 4th when we went out there. It's the encampment behind Burger King. So one of the things that we do is we count not just the tents, but we also keep track of the people and be able to see what kind of services they're taking, they're accepting from our team. And this is pretty crucial to when the Caltrans or CHP decides to move the encampments to see who's receiving services and who wants the services from our team. Also, we note quite a bit of the risk factors. So on this one, when we showed up, there was somebody who was, had an open fire, open flame, and the grass was super dry. So we asked them to please turn it off because that could have just caught the whole embankment on fire. But certain things that we noticed that are safety risks that will deem the camp to be removed or then escalate the removal of that camp. These are some numbers from our care, our Turlock pop event. So last week, we had a pop-up event here at the Gospel Mission where we provided services to the homeless population here in Turlock. We had over 100 participants, or 100 participants show up, sorry. We provided meals, food boxes, clothing, hygiene packs, haircuts. So this is something just to build a trust, to get individuals to want to see who the team is, because as we move into Turlock, they're going to see us a lot more so that they're able to buy into what we're doing and then know that we're here to help them, not here to, you know, just, I guess, build the trust that some of them have already mistrust of government as we move through this. So just a little bit about the care lock, the care Turlock team, sorry. So what we have right now in the city of Turlock is we have a team dedicated to the city, which is one behavioral health specialist, who is the case manager, one peer navigator, a public health nurse, Turlock police sergeant, and January's employee of the month, Ian Rodriguez, as the police officer on the team. One of the things is, we've noticed also, when we form these teams, it's really important to have the right people in there. The people that have the compassion and they're, that understand and that are able to work with the individuals that we're working with. And Ian does an amazing job with individuals that we work with. And also his sergeant, to be able to give them the leeway to do something that's really outside the box of what law enforcement is, right? It's a little bit different, it's unorthodox, but it's still part of us being public servants. So I'm really excited about the team and what we've been doing here in Turlock and the partnership that we've had with the city, with the police chief, and just being able to work together and trying to provide a, a program to the Turlock residents, but also try to help with these, a lot of these individuals that are either having a mental health issue or physical medical issues and trying to get them into the correct services that they need. So we anticipate some of the Turlock clients to increase. So if you look here, we've had 10 referrals initially from Turlock PD. Out of those 10 referrals, three of those clients we connected to treatment, three of the clients were housed, two of them were actually not from this area, and we were able to connect them back to their family, which were out of state, and they went back to go live with their parents. And then two of the clients have recently received housing vouchers. And we received an additional 10 clients referred from the city of Turlock of Police Department and that we'll be working with here in the near future.
Did you want to talk about how you stole one of our employees? Sorry, I'm holding a little.
Our crime analyst is Vanessa Bravo. She's amazing. She does a great job and puts a lot of these graphics together. Yeah, she was.
You said you find the best people, I get it. Any questions or comments for Raul?
I just want to thank you and your team and everyone involved in this area for doing the work that you do. It's, you know, from here, it's, we recognize it as a problem that you can't really solve fully. We're always going to have it and the hard work that you guys are putting into it is making a real measured impact. And seeing the, the actual success stories brought forward like that is very inspiring and I think should, should instill some hope for our community that there are great things happening and that we're on the right track. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and I apologize for getting. It's Love Turlock time. Anybody, anybody who doesn't love Turlock? Come on up. Sorry, I, I don't know how I missed you guys. You and Raul got just overseen.
All right, hello, my name is Melanie and this is Lindsay. I'll introduce her. And, and we're with Love Turlock. We lead the whole team. We are the whole team, actually. And so last month, you guys saw us here, we were asking for support and really just encouraging participation and to talk about the event. And so tonight, we're here just to talk a little bit about how the event went. So for anybody that doesn't know what Love Turlock is, we host a community service event, one, one day citywide community service event. And what we do is we partner volunteers to specific service projects. And so those projects service all kinds of different organizations within Turlock. We also service parks, schools, a whole bunch of different locations. And individuals, thank you. And we actually prepared a little video and so we'll share that and then we'll have a few more things to say at the end. And so this is just kind of a recap of our event. Our goal was to have 400 volunteers this year and we had 486. So we had an overwhelming positive response and we were very happy with the results and we're looking forward to next year.
So we want to thank the city for your sponsorship. Thank you Mayor Amy Boofleck and Councilmember Pam Franco for coming out and participating and serving on that Love Turlock. We also want to say thank you to the Parks Department. The individuals who were there that morning were fantastic and several volunteers came up to us and just complimented how great they were to work with. And so we want to recognize them, they were awesome. We are looking forward to Love Turlock next year. So mark your calendars, it will be April 29th. It's always going to be the last Saturday in April. And we are hopeful to have many, many more projects next year. We want to reach more of our parks. We would challenge each council member to think about a project in your district and we would love to have all of you there volunteering and serving alongside of us. So that kind of sums up everything that we wanted to share. We have just one last thing, we want to leave with you, which is the banner that we had our volunteers write what they love about Turlock and we are hopeful to see it downstairs in the city hall.
Thank you so much. Okay, now as 8D, authorized city manager entered an agreement, form approved by the city attorney with legacy health endowment to augment the LHE pilot program for person-centered care. Mr. Wilson? Do you need a microphone?
Okay, I'll, I'll talk loud. Thank you Mayor and Council. This item is being brought to you this evening and we have Mr. Jeffrey Lewis with Legacy Health Endowment to speak on this item and give us a little bit more information to help us better understand.
All right, well, I think you just got pawned off to Mr. Lewis.
Let me stand here.
Please.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is just the continuation of our conversation from a few weeks ago. Person-centered care project is a long-term care initiative for what we've referred to as the forgotten middle, people over 55 who are disabled or seniors who don't qualify for medical and who need services. The program is designed to protect them from prehospitalization as well as unnecessary placement in long-term care facilities. We have a pharmacy partner in TinRx, which is a local pharmacy in Turlock. Community hospice, known as Community Care Choices, is our palliative care partner. Care Links is our respi care partner. We have a variety of others that are being recruited this time. As I referenced before, the, the foundation has committed $650,000, which has gone to Community Health Centers of America, which is the healthcare provider. Your dollars will go, you know, between us and spent solely in Turlock. You'll get a database that says what kinds of people we're seeing. We expect to see in Turlock a number of people who need assistance with non-healthcare-related issues like homemaker services, transportation services, some getting meds filled or refilled. But we'll keep you updated on a quarterly basis or more often as you wish.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Lewis? Question?
Hi, yeah, thank you. This is, this is so exciting. This is filling such a huge gap for this population, the ones that are not with the income and their level of disability that don't qualify for medical. My one question is, how are people going to know about this? How are individuals going to be able to, do they apply? Is there an application? Will, will our county be aware of this service for Turlock residents?
So first, in terms of public relations, we will do ads in English and Spanish as well as a variety of other languages. There'll be a complete press packet that's put together to get out to senior publications, other publications, radio, television, et cetera. I sat next to County Supervisor Kiazza tonight and shared with him that what we were doing and that I'd be approaching the county for some additional dollars as well for the northern part.
And he committed.
He's very positive about it. Yes. And you know, when Vito's positive, it's like a done deal, so. But we expect, you know, this will be an ongoing conversation. So one of the things that we're going to do is we'll tap into Rotary Lions Clubs, the Deneer Lions in particular, and others to keep the word out there and about. I don't expect we'll have many problems. I expect we're going to have an overload and we'll have a lot more people than we can handle, which is a good thing. But it'll give us a better sense in Turlock and the surrounding communities of the enormity of the problem facing the forgotten middle.
Any other questions for Mr. Lewis? Thank you, sir. We're going to open to the public, maybe there might be questions you'll have to come back for. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Vito, did you want to speak on this item about how you're committing to the? No, okay. Thank you, supervisor. Okay, I'll close, public comment, bring it back for dialogue.
Yeah, dialogue this, a motion to approve the action.
A second on that.
Absolutely.
Ouch. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bubla?
Yes. 5-0, thank you, Mr. Lewis. No, I was trying to be smart, but, but I thought about it better. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and thank you, Vito Kessa. Okay, now we all have public participation. This is time set aside for public to address the city council on any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council for five minutes. Who would like to speak? I'm sorry, I do have cards. I, I had to sit there and looked at them. Okay, so Melanie for Love Turlock? She already left, right? Okay, I was like, huh. Virginia? Hi. Pardon me? Here typically, yeah.
Good evening, City Council Mayor and staff of Turlock. My name is Vitinia Penyalaosa. Is the mask off better?
Yeah.
All right, sorry, force of habit. Don't even know I'm wearing it anymore. My name is Vitinia Penyalaosa. I am representing Y Green Energy Fund today and I wanted to talk to you briefly about Y Green Energy Fund and Property Assess Clean Energy Program, also known as PACE. PACE is a financing mechanism that allows property owners to make energy efficient upgrades to their residential and commercial properties and is repaid as a special tax assessment on the property owner's regular property tax bill. PACE provides 100% of the upfront cost for these upgrades. There are over 100 residential and 125 commercial upgrades that can be made to residential businesses, residential homes, residential properties or commercial properties. PACE is also 100% voluntary. PACE advances California's climate change goals and helps local government meet their climate action plans. PACE provides low to moderate income owners a highly regulated form of financing that is safe, equitable, easy to navigate, and inexpensive. PACE is a form of financing property improvements and is an alternative to other forms of financing such as personal loans, credit cards, or home equity lines of credit. However, PACE has far more stringent protections than the aforementioned forms of financing. A typical pace rate is anywhere from 3.99% to 7.99% and there is no cost to local government to have PACE enabled in their. government to have PACE enabled in their city. Just because PACE is enabled, though, does not mean that property owners will have to utilize PACE, enabling PACE simply giving property owners another option to choose from. PACE is enabled throughout the Central Valley already. We're enabled in the majority of Fresno County, all of Kings County, Stanislaw, so we have a presence throughout the Central Valley. Today, I want to highlight our commercial program. Y Green's commercial PACE program provides financing to small and medium-sized businesses. Our project minimum is $5,000 to $10,000, depending on the project that is done. Other PACE, commercial PACE administrators' minimum is around $200,000. This project minimum would exclude a lot of mom-and-pop shops, a lot of small ag businesses that do exist throughout the Central Valley. Y Green has a commercial retroactive financing program. This retroactive financing allows commercial property owners to get capital back to reinvest, pay off other debt, or acquire additional properties, which has been crucial during the COVID-19 pandemic. Y Green also has an affiliate member program. Businesses who refer projects that ultimately get funded get a referral fee. In order for Turlock to enable PACE, either residential, commercial, or both, in the city of Turlock, the council would need to approve resolutions under AB 811 and SB 555 that allows PACE to operate within the city limits. I'd be more than happy to come back at a later time and provide a full presentation to the council or have meetings with one or all council members, city manager, any staff that would like to get more information on this program. Thank you for your time, and I'll leave some business cards for you in case there is any interest with the city.
If you just leave one with our clerk, that'd be perfect.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right. John?
Welcome. I just wanted to make a few comments. Hopefully, it's not on my card, but when I'm sitting here listening to different things, I always say, put in my two cents worth. The care program and everything else like that, the only thing I say about any government program or any program is metrics, okay? How successful is it? How much does it cost? And what is the long-term benefit for things? It's nice that you get people into a program and everything, but how successful is that program and how much is it costing? You know, what's the success rate? You know, when you get into one of these programs, you know, you're never going to be 100% and whatever, but you want to know when you're talking about taxpayer dollars, you know, how successful is it? So having an inspector general or however they do it is something that should always be there so that people know, you know, what's going on and how effective it is. This is a years-long thing. It's not, you know, a month-to-month or a year type of thing. It's got to be over the long term of how it does. Another thing about the garbage, we swapped out our garbage cans, but I can tell you by just talking to my neighbors that virtually none of them know what the biggest thing is about putting your food waste into the green curb, not one of them. That's, I'm talking anecdotal and all this kind of good stuff. So I know about it because I was here. But I don't know if there's supposed to be some program or something. I realize it's spelled out about what you're supposed to do, but I just, I think that none of them, I mean, we're just talking, you know, six people, didn't know that that's what they were supposed to do. So I'm just throwing that out. I wanted to bring something that really has nothing to do with you guys, but I wanted to, you know, spread the word. There is something called the Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP. That's a national program, a state program about getting low-cost or no-cost internet area. The day came out, the day after it came out, I called up and I qualified. And you've got to be, but you've got to be pretty low. It's like 200% of poverty and all that kind of good stuff, but then to get it for nothing, I got it for nothing in my existing program. So it's nice. I'll take it. But there are programs where you only pay $30 a month and everything else like that. So I don't know, oops, I don't know how you spread that news or whatever or pass the word, but it's just something, just to make people aware of it. And then the last thing I had to say was about water. Listen, you know, I, five years ago, I was a really big water waster. I have a nice yard and everything else, but I wasted an enormous amount of water. I put in drip irrigation 25 years ago. Very few people have a drip irrigation system like I have. So I always, I always bring this, this is my spreadsheet for all the valves I have. And so every year I go through it, and especially the last five years, I've gone through it and tried to tweak everything and, just to do it. Water is not a God-given right, okay? And until people realize that it doesn't matter what you want, and it doesn't matter how cheap you want it, it doesn't mean it's always going to be there, you know? The Southland has gone through a 20-year drought, you know? The Hoover Dam is almost empty and everything else like that, so they're going to start coming up here looking at our water, out of the Delta and everything else like that. Now, we can sit here and everything else like that, but I'll say this and I'll keep saying it, you know, we're blessed to have what we have, just don't waste it. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Mr. Trewyler?
Council staff and Turlock citizens, Milt Trewyler. Tonight, I'm going to continue our discussion on mental health, and this is from the Center of Disease Control. What is mental health? Mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. There is a handout that was passed out, or is being passed out. It also helps determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make healthy choices. Mental health is important at every stage of life, from childhood to adolescence to adulthood. Although the terms are often used interchangeably, poor mental health and mental illness are not the same. A person can experience poor mental health and not be diagnosed with mental illness. Likewise, a person diagnosed with mental illness can experience periods of physical, mental, and social well-being. Why is mental health important to overall health? Mental and physical health are equally important components of overall health. For example, depression increased the risk of many types of physical health problems, particularly long-lasting conditions like diabetes, heart disease, and stroke. Similarly, the presence of chronic conditions can increase the risk for mental illness. Can your mental health change over time? Yes. It's important to remember that a person's mental health can change over time, depending on many factors. When the demands place a person exceeds their resources and coping abilities, their mental health could be impacted. For example, if someone is working long hours, caring for relatives, or experiencing economic hardships, they may experience poor mental health. How common are mental illnesses? Mental illnesses are among the most common health conditions in the United States. More than 50% will be diagnosed with a mental illness or disorder at some time in their lifetime, half of us. One in five Americans will experience a mental illness in a given year. One in five children, either currently or at some time during their life, have had a seriously debilitating mental illness. One in 25 Americans lives with a serious mental illness, such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, or major depression. What causes mental illness? There's no single cause for mental illness. A number of factors can contribute to the risk of mental illness, such as, one, early adverse life experiences, such as trauma or a history of abuse, for example, child abuse, sexual abuse, witnessing violence. Two, experiences related to other ongoing chronic medical conditions, such as cancer and diabetes. Three, biological factors or chemical imbalances in the brain. Four, use of alcohol or drugs and having feelings of loneliness or isolation. I want to look at some numbers here. In 2020, there were 14.2 million U.S. adults who experienced a serious mental illness. In March of this year, the number of homeless in the U.S. is estimated to be 552,800. So if we look at the total, 14.2 million, only about 1 in 25, that's only 1/25th of all the people in the U.S. that had mental illness issues. So, and not all homeless people have mental health issues, but some of them do. My question to you is, what would Jesus Christ say if he were to walk into this room right now or into one of our city council members when we're discussing, when we're discussing the homeless issue? We are not looking at these people as humans. We are dehumanizing them. We are excluding them. We are being, in some cases, inhumane to them. We continue to move them around the town. We don't want to put in a simple shelter area where they can go. Housing first. We know that housing first gives us an 80% success rate. Then we can have our cares team go right to the, right to our shelter area, and I'm just talking about either a tent area or the little houses that you wouldn't allow my sister to have. I'm sorry about that, but you didn't do it. Because some homeless want their dogs with them. Some, they just need a place to stay. So then the cares team, Sergeant Rodriguez can come to this area, and he can actually meet the people and talk to them. You've got to get a rapport with these people, as has been stated several times tonight already. They're not just going to listen to you because you come out there and want to talk to them. They are human beings just like the rest of us. We need to treat them like human beings. We need to do the job we need to do. So if Jesus Christ walks into Turlock, let him see something really nice. Thank you.
Anyone else who did not fill out a card? Mr. Brecker?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. I asked to pull consent item 5L. And can we get an update on the business seminar that we had earlier today? I believe it was earlier today, like a count of the number of businesses that attended? Thank you for that. I also want to echo the comment on wanting metrics. I've asked before about CDBG funds, such as the 140K that was given to Turlock Gospel Mission to purchase the building north of them that they were going to use for storage of, I got to say it the right way, storage of possessions of the homeless. Okay. You know, has that happened? What is happening? So on and so forth. Okay. Turlock Municipal Code 9-5-912 Review of Development Agreement states, "The Development Services Department shall review the development agreement every 12 months after the date the agreement is entered into. The department shall give 30 days' advance notice to the property owner of the time when the matter will be considered by the Planning Commission and City Council, who shall conduct a public hearing, at which the property owner shall demonstrate good-faith compliance with the terms of the agreement. The burden of proof of such issue shall be on the property owner. If the city council finds and determines that the property owner has not complied in good faith with the terms and conditions of the development agreement, which we know Natural Healing Center has not, the city council shall order the property owner to cure the default within 60 days. If the property owner fails to do so, the city council may modify or terminate the NHC, Natural Healing Center, was granted their development agreement at the end of the September 2020 meeting, which means a public hearing by the Planning Commission and City Council should have happened by November or December of last year. Mr. City Manager, I emailed you six weeks ago asking why this has not happened, and this all happened before you came on board, and you said you would find out. So I'm asking, am I correct in my understanding of Turlock Municipal Code? And if so, why has the public council hearing not happened? Mr. Dayspring was listed as the majority owner of NHC in their application. His experience in all phases of cannabis-growing, product development, and dispensary operation, and his ability to recruit large investors were major factors in NHC receiving the ranking that they did. We now know he lied on NHC's application and not revealing that he did not pay his taxes like he claimed and had been involved in, mind a little detail, bribing public officials. If this had been known at the time, I suspect that NHC would have not received as high of a ranking as they did and would not have had the opportunity to develop a cannabis dispensary in Turlock. Mr. Dayspring's home was raided by the FBI in March of 2020, so he knew what was coming and transferred majority ownership of NHC to his longtime girlfriend, Ms. Garcia. Note that I said transferred, not that Ms. Garcia bought him out. Recent reports disclose that Ms. Garcia plans on selling the Turlock dispensary when it opens to a company called Glass House. This means that we will have two changes in ownership, all before the dispensary even operates for a period of time, and without any review of the new owners, nor would they have gone through the same ranking process that the other cannabis dispensaries did. To say that this entire process has been, and kind of continues to be, if I understand correctly, a farce, would be an understatement. By the way, Dayspring is scheduled to be sentenced Friday in federal court. Thank you.
Real quick, you have like three seconds, but you want to pull item L on consent? Can you just say why real quick so that we can address it when we open?
It's like, I understand why you want to do what you're doing, but there's like $1.8 million in federal grant funds that could be used for repairing arterial and collector roads, and I kind of think that we have more pressing needs within the city limits of the city of Turlock, like Gear Road that I keep on mentioning all the time. And no, I do not own property there. So I just question.
Okay.
Why are we doing it?
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who did not fill out a card wishing to speak in public comment? Okay, let's close that. So in the future, Ms. Eddy or Mr. Wilson or both of you, we'll need some metrics on their care program after quarterly or six months or whatever. Also, the business summit should be giving an update soon, I believe, on all the stats and data, what they've done since we hired them. Garbage bins, Mr. Goodman, if you'd be able to provide us maybe the next meeting, what you know about the advertisement for the garbage bins or get Mr. Marchant to let you know about that, that would be helpful. And DA on weed update, I think you'll answer about the DA that, he sent you an email about the DA's for weed. Okay. Okay, moving on then. Motion waiving, reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title?
Summon.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moness? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Three of them. Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moness?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Passes 5-0, thank you for that. Now we're on to consent calendar. There's a green sheet on item 5C as in Charles. Item 5J is removed for separate consideration, and we're pulling item L Lincoln. Any others? If not, motion with amendment?
Yeah, motion to approve as amended.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moness?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you for that. Item J is twofold. It's proving a contract in the Mount, whatever, for the southeast quadrant, and then closing that notice of completion. My concerns are that we've gone out there, Vice Mayor and I, on several occasions, I'm getting complaints about it, and the public's not happy with, you know, 30, well, 40 to 50 years, and they kind of just got, dropped 50 years, and they kind of just got, dropped some dirt on it and smushed it a little bit, and it's really not better. It's actually worse. And I don't think that our residents deserve that. So I want to make sure that we make a stand now and that we fix it, so that also Baker and Associates, or whatever they're called, will understand that that wouldn't be something we'd allow under their tutelage as well. So do you want to speak to that, Ms. Quintero?
So in receiving feedback from this project, the other city projects that we have in design that we're looking at similar products of Cape Seal, Headstrom, for example, we've changed to grind and pave. That will give more of a, there'll be a longer life and give more of the feel of a new roadway. The southwest quadrant projects that were similar treatments in some of the areas have also been changed to, I think, a treatment that the community will be happier with. An option for the item tonight would be if council chose to approve the change order so that we could pay the contractor for the work that has been done. They did complete what was in the scope of their contract. We can ask the engineering staff to go back and take a look if there's other options for additional treatments that could be done. I don't, I don't know what those would be, but we can look into that and bring back options if there is something, and not accept the notice of completion at this time, see if there's a change order that could be added to make any modifications, if there's specific problem areas over others that, you know, can get to us so we can really focus on those areas and see if there's something that can be done to address this project. Can't promise that, but we can definitely look at and see what we can do. But if the change order portion could get approved, hold on the NOC, that would help move forward with what we need to do to pay the contractor for the scope of what they've done.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, sorry about this. It's another one that got kind of dumped on you. You were, you were not in there. I did walk it today. It is pretty rough. So the Cape Seal is what we did?
It was a mix. There were some portions that were slurry seal, and then some that were Cape Seal.
Because it was ground, but not a lot. And then they just came and did one little, almost painting of a little bit of asphalt, and then, and then compacted it. But there's a lot of areas in there that are like chipping up along the sides, the concrete, the gutter, the storm drain gutter. You've got about an inch to an inch and a half difference between the road base and then the concrete gutter. So that's going to cause some issues on further erosion later on down the road. But thank you for offering us a couple of suggestions, and hopefully we can do something that, we'll bring it up. I'd like to see what the, the LIDAR said the condition of the road was, the roads are in that area, just to see if it was brought up to that 80%, because I can already see the cracks coming back through. So, I mean, it wasn't your choice to do that kind of a program, but I think those roads were a little too far along in the deterioration for that type of a seal, anyway. If we could...
Yeah, we can, we can look at it and see what kinds of options. We can look at the LIDAR. You know, it was a treatment that, at the time when those projects were scoped, the road money was much more limited, and so we were looking at treatments that can expand the life of the road, get us the most bang for our buck in the sense that, you know, what can go the farthest. And so that, the Cape Seal is, is a, it does expand the lifetime, you know, of the road, but it's more of like a five to seven-year treatment versus a grind and pave that could be more like 20 years with slurry seals. So, you know, it was, it's hard in looking at it now, and we know we have the roads program, but at the time that we were in design and council was allocating money, we had very set budgets and targets, and we were trying to get as far as we can, could to, you know, get these roads up. But, like I said, we can look at it and see what kinds of options there are.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see that LIDAR. So thank you.
Yes.
I also had a question. Oh, yes. Thank you. The, another thing that was, while this project was in, was in construction, was there a lot of, there was a lot of questions of if there would potentially have sidewalk around these areas? I understand these roads are very narrow, but I think there's a priority here, given that a lot of kids that attend Turlock High School, they walk down, down these streets to go home, they live in the neighborhood, and they're walking on the street, and they're walking, you know, in people's yards. And I understand at the time, that was not approved in the specs of the, the scope of work to start figuring out how we could do sidewalks there. But I think it's, it's a huge, it's a, it's a safety concern, and if there's a possibility to include that without getting, without stepping too much on the individual property owner's property, that would, I think that would be a great opportunity for us to add an additional improvement to that area. Sorry, and lighting too, that's a very dark area. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Ms. Katie, thank you. By the way, I, let me just say, we know this, this is not your mess, it's somebody else's end. I'm sorry that you're having to clean it up, but thank you. The, the contractor that's already done the work, I, I hear you when you're saying, can we get the, the money approved, but not the NOC? Do we want that contractor to come back and fix any of this that's maybe deficient? And are they liable for any of that?
So there's a one-year period in which, yes, if there were deficiencies, even if they're paid, they have to come back and make those repairs. I think from, you know, the inspections that have been done, it was determined that, you know, the work was done for what was in the specs, but we will definitely ask our inspectors to go back out, take a look, determine, is there deficiencies? If so, that fall under warranty work, that would be covered if there's, if it's just a difference in the type of treatment that was chosen and the condition that it's really not on the contractor, if they've completed the work for the specs and design that were in place.
Any idea how long that would take to get inspectors back out there?
Tomorrow, as long as I have enough here, I'll be asking them to go out there. If I send some text messages right now, maybe we...
So what I'm getting at is, can we just push this to the next meeting so that we can see what those inspectors say before we write this $1.3 million, or whatever the check is to bring the contract total up to 1.3?
Yeah, it's the, the $33,000 is the change order. This, we can, this has, the, the work has been complete for quite some time, and so there, it would be...
We still hold them on the completion?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Quintero? Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Which item is it?
It's item J. It's the southeast district road with stuff. Nothing? Okay. Yes, Mr. Breckerman, your head has to go up higher, I barely saw you. There you go.
This kind of sounds like maybe lessons we need to learn, perhaps? I, I don't, I don't know. It's not really clear. If I remember correctly, from the roads workshop that we had, they talked a fair amount about Cape Seal, if I remember right. Okay, so that piqued my attention when, when I heard that. So it sounds like we need to be very careful what roads that we allow them to, say, use Cape Seal as opposed to grind and whatever the term is, I forget. And then, so, I, I don't know, is this more of an issue of, of the contractor did a shoddy job? Did the contractor do it according to the specs, and the specs are not written that well? Or was it a matter that this road really needs a different type of, of process done to it? So that's kind of my question.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, let's close the public comment. I would say that it's a compilation of all of the issues you've brought forward. We do have money now towards roads, and I would hope that, that the residents of that area know that we're not going to let it just be mediocre or adequate, that anything we look at. And I think the, the point that Vice Mayor made about the LIDAR track is going to be significant, because they'll know whether or not you're going to need to grind, or if you could do the Cape Seal. So I think we're going to be ahead, and I'd love to see those numbers on what it looked like for the southeast quadrant when they ran their numbers, because when we did it prior to this, it was probably a physical walk and, and nothing too scientific, because we didn't have that. Questions, comments?
Did you close public comment?
I did.
Move to approve motion one of item J.
Second. We have a motion for just item one?
Just item one, second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Monas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Quintero, passes 5-0. All right, item L is in Lincoln, authorizing staff to submit an application to Stan's House Council of Government, StanCOG, to designate 100% of the, the city sheriff's surface transportation block grant program funds for federal year to the area of Golden State Boulevard, Gulf Road, and Berkeley Avenue. And is this Ms. Quintero again? You need to just pull your chair right over there.
I think I would like a record of nine items on the agenda tonight. So the item before you is asking, essentially, if council would like to authorize staff to move forward and allocating the funding from the STBGP, federal funding, to go towards the Gulf-Golden State-Berkley interchange improvement project. This is a project that has been in the works for quite a few years. There was, I'll have to look exactly, I want to say around 2006, there was an agreement between the city and the county to start looking at this intersection and to partner on these repairs. The county obtained a grant to fund all of the design work. The city has been working with the county on design. The county is the lead. They have, through the grant, funded all of the design. It is 99%, 100% complete in design and is ready to move forward in construction. So it has always been some agreement that the city and county would share in the construction costs. The Morgan Ranch master plan area will have traffic impacts to this area, and so there is, has always been some mitigation that although this area is not in the city limits, because of the proximity, as well as our future southeast two and three master plan areas, that we will need to participate in mitigating traffic impacts in this intersection, as well as it, it's not an intersection that operates well currently. And so although it is in the county, there is definitely a partnership needed in some city obligation. The federal money, the STBGP, has to be used on Caltrans identified collector streets, and so it, there are streets in the city limit that it could be used on, but it's, it is more limited. It's not going to cover residential roads, things of that nature. So this is the funding source that staff felt would best fit for what the project is. The county is looking at using their same STBG funds for the next two years to bring this project together. And so the county would still be the lead, they would handle all of the federal paperwork, et cetera, but the city would be contributing if council chooses to move in this direction. Otherwise, there were some timeliness items for the county in obtaining the grant for doing design, and so if this project doesn't move to construction soon, they could face some penalties on that grant that they got as well. So if there's a different way that council would like to fund this project, we're open to that, but in staffs, and looking at the different constraints that funding has, felt that this is the best proposal, as well as it's the same funding source that the county is looking to use as well. If there's any other specific questions?
Questions for Director Quintero?
Do we know how many traffic, either accidents or trucks bottoming out, going over that railroad track, how delays? How many complaints do you get on that intersection? Because it's a pain.
We get it quite a few. Personally, it's my track to Starbucks, and so, you know, it's, I would really like to see that repaired. I don't have specific data on, on accidents that I've brought for tonight, but...
It's a hugely, hugely traveled intersection, though, in, in the city.
Yes, correct.
Not in the city, it's county, but it's, it's a, it's a source of embarrassment and pain.
Yeah, and it, it operates at a level of Service F, which is the worst in our, you know, like a grading system, and, and Turlock's roadways, you know, if we're at a, operating at a C, that's low for our typical operation. So, yes, it is absolutely an intersection that needs to be addressed.
Okay, we'll open it to the public. I think Mr. Breckerman first, unless, did that answer your question, sir? You don't have to talk, I'm just curious if you got it.
Yeah, I, I think it kind of answered. By the way, her plaque is still here.
Uh-oh.
So she needs to get that. Actually, probably the, I understand it, it's a bad intersection. I think it's kind of hard to explain to the public that we have $1.8 million and we choose to spend it way out there as opposed to, you know, inside the city limits. But I think the best argument, and also, you know, that area, if I understand correctly, there's been plans for developing it for like 20 years, and it hasn't happened, so it kind of hard to say, let's spend money, you know, justify spending money so that we can develop that, that area. I think probably one of the best things that I heard was that if we don't do it, then the county is going to have trouble with the grant that they got to, to do the design work. So perhaps we should move ahead. You know, be aware, people probably won't like it, so, okay.
Yes. This is a project that actually people in Turlock will like, because eventually that's going to be in Turlock. So let's have the county help us pay for it. We're actually getting the county to pay, and the, and the federal government to pay for something that will eventually be in Turlock. You've seen the pictures, you've been through the intersection, it's a disaster. I don't care, 20, 30, 40 years ago, it was a disaster, it's still the same disaster. Everything is ready to go, the planning's been done, it's in motion, it's an excellent project, and it will help develop Morgan Ranch, because then the developers, and if you walk, if you go over and drive in that area, they're all ready to develop it. I don't know why they're not, but all the fields are plowed, everything's ready to go. Maybe they're just waiting for us to finish that street. But anyway, it's going to take two years to do it anyway. But it's very necessary that we do this. So, yes, we should have this, approve this funding. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about this item? Okay, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the will of council.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Seconded.
And we have a second. We'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, it passes 4-0 with one absent for the moment. Moving on, thank you, Ms. Quintero. Final readings, ordinance, second and final reading, adoption of an ordinance amending Turlock Municipal Code Title VI, Chapter 6.3, regarding garbage, recyclable barrels, and organic waste to incorporate changes related to SB 1383, state mandated requirements. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Monas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you. There are no public hearings. Action item 8A is designating the Turlock's Third Thursday Summer Concert Series, and look at you.
Oh, brought a crew.
Uh-oh. This is big.
This is. This is, there's been a lot of really good things tonight that happen, and we're just trying to keep the momentum going.
Like it.
Honorable mayor and council, our request tonight is designating Turlock's Third Thursday Concert Series as a city cosponsored special event and allocating funds from city-sponsored special event general account to cover the staff cost as part of the cosponsorship. The city's contribution to the event will include the use of Turlock Regional Sports Complex, staff time to ensure the facility is prepped prior to the event, throughout the event, cleaned and secured post-event. The chamber of responsibility will be logistics for all other things included in the event. If approved, both organizations will be named as event cosponsors and will use social media platforms for advertising purposes. On the city side, our contribution for the donation would be the sports complex and part-time staff, those together. part-time staff, those together over the three events would be less than $2,000. And I'm going to turn it over to Irene to talk about some of the more detailed things that are going on with the event.
Good evening, Irene. Hello, everyone, mayor. We were hoping to have this event for the community to get together now that COVID restrictions have lightened up. Seems like everybody wants to go out and to bring everybody together to interact and have fun. The first one we're thinking of would be in June, the third Thursday, and we're looking at it as a kids' night. So we plan to have a few games out there, a bounce house, maybe some canine units from the sheriffs and the Turlock Police Department, possibly even a garbage truck, because every kid loves those. Yes, and just, and some food vendors, too. We're looking at having that on one side of the parking lot. So people are welcome to either buy food there or bring their own, have a picnic, and just have a wonderful time, which will also include a DJ for the kids.
Starting at what time?
We are looking at having it, I believe, I wasn't expecting to speak on this tonight. Six to nine in the evening.
I'm just putting it in the calendar as we speak, I want to get it, all right?
Yes.
Questions for either Eric or Irene?
Did Gina leave you and left you in charge of this?
Yes, she did, this morning.
Because I spoke with her about it earlier. I was expecting her here, so thank you.
So Irene, you're only asking, you guys, Mr. Schultz, you're only asking us to approve June? What about July and August?
No, that's for all three events.
Oh, it is for all three?
Yeah, and the total I gave you would include all three events.
And McGruff, the crying dog, can make an appearance, too? Chief is preoccupied right now. Or he was totally ignoring that.
Yeah, probably. McWhat?
McGruff, the crime dog. He can make an appearance, too? Okay.
He's whatever. Other comments, questions for, questions, I'm sorry, for these two? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this? Any preview? Can you sing? What do you got?
No, I won't be the entertainment. And it's a good thing.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back.
Motion to approve 8.8.
I'll second it if we can also possibly get a fire truck out there, too, for the kids' side. That'd be pretty cool.
And Turlock PD, you're going to have to up your game, because I know Sheriff Dircksey's going to bring some, bring some stuff.
We have a motion in a second, is that correct?
In a second with the fire truck.
With the fire truck only?
Yes.
Okay, that's an augmentation.
I accept that amendment.
Oh, there you go.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, passes five zero. Thank you both for being here. I know you had a long day, Irene, being at Business Summit all day.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item B. This one, look at that, IT in the House, appropriating said amount of money towards network firewall cyber solutions. All right, Mr. Souza, what do you have?
Well, after doing some extensive research, mayor and council, we've got a few numbers just to increase our cybersecurity, as you had mentioned before. So what we've got here is we're building on the existing infrastructure that we currently have. Of course, it's, there's always the potential and danger, so we just wanted to enhance it. And this is for our firewalls and some subscriptions that we want to put on there. Basically, a subscription is basically what you put on the firewall, and then it continues to update over an internet connection. We've got internal and external. So the internal is also because we've got a lot of virtual servers, and we want them to have zero trust, so that then that's what will protect them from any possible malware or attacks. We've also got email security, which is, we're hoping, of course, users usually can be the weak point, so we try to make sure we help them. So we're trying to educate them by putting out some phishing, but this will definitely help. It'll give them notifications of what possibly can be happening. If it's an email that is suspicious, it may be from someone from the outside, it'll compare if there's a user on the inside and the outside, and it'll warn them that it might be a dangerous email to click on any links or run anything that may be malicious. There's secure backup also, is which we're looking at, and failover resiliency. The failover resiliency would be to make sure that we have internet connectivity at all times, to make sure that any updates are always going to happen. And the secure data backup is just in case, we want to put all of our data elsewhere, preferably into the cloud, so that at some point, there have been attacks already recently that we've heard, where they get not only all of your servers, but they also start deleting your backups. So we want to cover for that and put it elsewhere also. And that is what you see in the complete. Of course, because this is always so constantly changing, that's why you see some of the prices. We IT, I'm going to toot our horn, we always try to make sure we get the best bang for our buck. And as you know, we don't come up here too often, because we're in the back shadows, we just want to make sure things work. So we just want to get the best pricing, and that's why you see these constant changes. We're trying to get the best value we could from all of our vendors that we ask for some pricing. And that'll do it. If you have any questions?
If we said yes tonight, how soon would you be able to activate?
Oh, we'd be acting on it tomorrow. It's that urgent. And we don't want to waste any time also.
And in respect to dispatch and our RMS system or CAD system, this won't help that right now? We still have, that's still somewhere that we're going to be compromised?
It protects us, because it makes sure that those firewalls, anything coming in and anything going out. Of course, we're always monitoring anything. We talk about opening and closing ports, but making sure. It's fortunate also that all of our RMS and our CAD, it's internal, it's part of that virtual environment that we have. So we are, so to speak, our own cloud. It's a secure internal, it's not traversing to the outside. Anything that traverses to the outside, yes, would go through these specific firewalls, and it's looking at them, and it's analyzing them and processing it at very fast speeds? Well, we can't imagine.
Questions for Mr. Souza? Actually, can you pass over to, yeah, well, sure, it's supposed to be questions, but, you know, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to just let council, mayor and council know, IT has worked very hard on this. They've done a lot of research in a very short time. Cybersecurity is huge. I mean, we're seeing, just looking at our renewals for insurance, for cyber insurance, costs are skyrocketing, and they have, they're behind the scenes, and they work extremely hard to help protect the city, the employees, the citizens that are paying their bills. There's so much involved, and I just wanted mayor and council to know how much they, work they've put into this.
Any questions before I open it to the public? All right, hang on, we're going to open it to public, there might be some like technical questions, and it's all you. We'll open it to public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? Wow, okay, we'll close that and bring it back. So my understanding is when we never see you guys, you're in an IT cloud? Is that what you're doing? That's what I took away from these.
Yes, we're hiding back there in that cloud. Somewhere in the sky.
I got a motion to approve 8B, and I will second that.
And that's with the green sheet?
Yeah, with the green sheet.
Correct?
With the green sheet.
All right.
I also just wanted to highlight a couple of things, really out of the kudos of this, and really the immediacy of this issue. There was a recent study done, especially when the pandemic happened, people working from home, where this, and a media company basically interviewed hundreds of government agencies in the US and in the UK, and they asked, hey, what do you guys feel most susceptible to? And cybersecurity was one of the biggest one, because the private industry is outpacing government so much, because it takes councils like us and to prioritize cybersecurity. That grew extremely, extremely quickly. And that was really highlighted during the pandemic. And over 65% of them said, you know, that this is because the private and individuals can do a lot more with just my little personal laptop than they do in, even in a government agency that you would assume that you want to be very, very protected. So I think this is a huge priority, and I really applaud the, our experts that are in there every day, and making sure that this is, this is the way that we needed to go, to protect our users, our citizens, and really restore the confidence in, even bit by bit, restoring the confidence in government security.
Or gigabit by gigabit.
Gigabit by gigabit by gigabit. I don't even know if that's like appropriate measurement, but that's what we're doing here.
Or terabit.
Terabit, oh, that is a very big bit, yeah. So on that, my vote is yes, if you're going to get on the list right now.
Did we call the roll?
Not yet.
Okay, she's in.
The motion's second, I was just ready to go.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Souza, passes five zero. All right, Mr. Moreno, you're up. Authorizing the borrowing of funds from a private placement lender in a principal amount not to exceed a certain amount to refinance outstanding sewer system obligations. Let's talk about sewer. You going to have pictures of the sewer? Why is the finance guy showing us pictures?
We'll go ahead and get started while she's pulling up the PowerPoint. So this item for you, honorable mayor and council members, is refinancing of a 2012 sewer bond, currently outstanding about 33.15 million outstanding. This originally was issued in 2012 for an amount of about $51.9 million. So at this point, the bond has now become callable. So we worked with a couple consultants to try and get this transaction done. We actually had to expedite it as soon as we could, because the market was going really crazy. So I do give kudos to the team that assisted us today for this project, because we did take a large stride and got it done very quickly. So at this point, we're looking to get some agreements in place, so we can get the deal structured and completed. We still can't call the maturity of the bond until September, but at this point, I'll go ahead and bring up our municipal advisor, Eric Scriven, who would speak a little bit about the project and how it came to fruition.
Is the PowerPoint going to be?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. I'm Eric Scriven with NHA Advisors. We've served on this project as the municipal advisor. We also have in the room James Wurzinniak from Jones Hall Bond Council, and Rick Brandis from Oppenheimer, who served as placement agent. Everyone pulled on the oar very, very hard. As you'll see, there's one table in here about the market that shows how quickly things were changing. Yeah, that's it. As your finance director mentioned, the transaction being refinanced was a $52 million issue in 2012, currently outstanding a little over $30 million. The interest rates, the average coupon on that outstanding debt is 3.95. And the bonds can be called in the middle of September. For the transaction, we saw interest rates rising at the beginning of the year, and around late February, when the war started, people really started exiting the bond markets. So rates started to accelerate with a couple of Federal Reserve increases. Things have increased ever since that moment in time. We were able to assemble the team very quickly. We spoke with a couple of entities out there. We have a very well-qualified team that pulled together the credit and the structure of the transaction quickly and put it out to about 20 banks. And we were able to secure a very strong response from several, but the best one was Webster Bank. The interest rate that was secured is slightly, they knew what they were doing, it's slightly under 3%, 2.99, secured that in early May, and we've been trying to lock them down ever since with what's been happening in this month particularly. The last bullet, I'll let the finance director handle that, that's his purview. This is the chart I was speaking of. As you can see, since the beginning of 2022, rates have just been going up. So early May, as you can see on the chart to the right, we had, we had a steady increase for several weeks, and we were just trying to do the transaction right, get it in front of the banks that would give it due consideration, but we really expedited the project. After all, it is a refinancing for a very strong credit. We have a recent rating, you're a double A minus credit from Standard and Poor's for the sewer enterprise, so we had a good credit to talk to folks about. As I said, the rate secured was 2.99%, 3.11% all-in, including financing costs. The term is the same maturity as the outstanding bonds. The savings are approximately $109,000 each year for all of the years, and that equates to about $1,003,000 net. The $1,001,22 is the net present value, which is a normal statistic, that is over 3% net present value compared to the bonds that you're refinancing, which is a metric we look at. If it's under 3%, usually you have to have a good reason to do it. So we were over the metric, and those are net of financing costs. The legal documents before you is a resolution and the loan agreement, and I'll let James speak to those if you have any questions. Pretty straightforward legal documentation that has been accepted by bank and bank council and by your bond council. And I believe city attorney has reviewed as well. That's the team. We worked closely with your finance director, who led the team, and everyone pulled very, very hard, very quickly to bring this, bring this home and before city council. As your finance director mentioned, if city council approves this evening, we'll close in mid-June to deliver funds to the trustee, who will hold those funds for three months until September 15th, which is the date that they can be redeemed. So they will be invested in open market, like treasuries, to earn interest. That $30 million will earn interest during that three-month period of time. And that concludes the presentation. I should go back to the last bullet for your finance director.
Director Moreno?
So thank you. So staff is recommending that we approve these agreements so we can move this transaction forward. Is there any questions?
Can't we get 1.4 million savings? I'm just kidding. Kidding? Any questions, or Ms. Moreno?
So we secured at the 299, when we're looking at the chart, it dropped to, what was its low point? Was it around one? Is that what it looked like? So how did we make a determination as to when we would be going after this? You know, like there's some savings that are left on the table because we didn't lock in at one. Could maybe play back how we go through that?
Yeah, so for bond issuance, you're going to have a term in which you can actually call. So for this issuance, it's actually not callable until 10 years. So that marker is at September date in which you can actually call them, so you couldn't do it prior to. So unfortunately, we kind of skipped a little bit here with it, but it is still a decent rate overall, and we'll still have some initial savings, which we'll just go back into the rate case of what we're doing.
Any other questions? All right, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing, Mr. Treewall?
Yes, council staff and Turlock citizens. I've read this over, and it's my understanding, I, it's my understanding that we're actually refinancing something that's already financed, and if we don't refinance it, we're just going to continue to pay the rates that we already have, and we're not taking any risks. We know that what we already have is there. Reading this, it's telling us that assuming the refinancing can be completed in no later, at no later than June 21st, 2022. So in less than 30 days, you're making the assumption that you're going to get this new rate, and to me, that's a risk, and it's a big risk. We're dealing with $33,100, $33,150,000. I'm the taxpayer that's paying this by my sewer rates, when I pay my sewer rate. So if we could not obtain a better rate, or maybe even a worse rate than we already have, it's going to increase my taxes on this. So it looks like a gamble to me. You're gambling with the citizens' money. If we already have the rates that are locked in and good to the completion of the payment of this loan, what would be the reason for changing it now? I understand you can do it now, because you're allowed to do it. I understand you can do it now because you're allowed to do it because of the ten-year period you just spoke of. And unfortunately, the ten-year period didn't end at one percent. It's ending today, or ending at the time specified. But we're taking a risk. It's a gamble. We don't know. Several times in here, you're stating again that the savings could be one hundred and nine thousand dollars per year. But it may not be. It could be more, too. Who's gonna cover it? Me, the taxpayer, is gonna cover it? Is it worth taking the risk, is what I'm asking? Is it truly worth, and how are we going to know? How am I, as a taxpayer, going to know whether you were successful? Are you gonna come back and say, "Well, I'm sorry, we actually got a little interest rate that's a little bit higher than we actually had before, but I'm not gonna tell you about that because that would probably anger you." So it's a gamble to me. It looks like a gamble, and I'm concerned about the fact that it is a gamble. I think you've answered most of my other questions. So is there a fee, also a fee on top of this for refinancing it? Of course there is. Why would you do it? I mean, why would they wanna do it? Because they're getting a fee. So is it worth the risk? We're assuming that we're going to get this lower rate, but we don't know that until this closes. Is it worth the risk? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we'll close it and then bring it back, Mr. Moreno, the risks.
So risks assessment in this transaction, as you can see from the staff report, your interest rate fluctuates between a three point two five and a five percent. This transaction is similar to what I'd like to show as a visual of refinancing your home, right? You're really just going out to the market, getting a better rate and locking it down. You're not increasing the terms of the agreement. You're overall saving over a hundred thousand dollars annually a year, which in turn goes back to the rate payers, right? Again, going back to the essence, where we're gonna be going into a new rate case, any additional savings on refinancing your debt structure is very important to get done.
Do we lock that rate in?
So there is no risk on the rate. It's gonna happen if we vote in majority tonight.
So we still gotta finish the process, obviously. We're working with the state because we have to assess their transactions because we have the SRF loans. So they're just making sure they're blessing their side of it. But other than that, we are moving forward.
Thank you. Question?
There was the other question about the fee associated with this refinance.
The fees really come down to the transactions as far as the consultants bringing them in place to be able to issue that debt. So normally, when you bring in a debt structure, you're gonna bring in your financing team, the consultants that do this for a living. So although your finance director will help through that process and help lead that team, you still need to bring in quality individuals to make sure we get that best rate. They're able to get the documents prepared as far as bond counsel. They're able to go out to the market. They know the players for the banks and transactions. They know who's doing what. So it's really worth going out there and getting that done.
So the fee is included in our cost savings already?
It'll be built into the dollar mill, yeah.
You've already, you've already netted out.
Cost of issuance is about a hundred and sixty, I believe it was, for the consultant.
But that's netted out of the, of the.
Yeah, it's worked.
And then questions, comments? All right, what's the will of council?
Question to approve, AC.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please? Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black? Yes, pass five zero. Thank you, Director Moreno. All right, city manager reports.
Mayor, council members. Tonight, you have in front of you actually a monthly report from all various city departments. I thought presenting information monthly might be more useful than presenting stuff on a weekly basis. The departments all kind of went out of their way to see who could outdo each other in terms of their presentations.
Competition.
I think police and fire are leading the charge, although Parks and Rec did a pretty good job as well. Unless you have any specific questions, I don't wanna bore the audience with what's in the information.
Good job.
Appreciate that. At least it'll minimize the amount of time that they're putting into this, but they'll get the extra special events that occur and such. Mr. Moreno, quarterly budget update. You still have much more to do tonight, anyway. The other meeting we're gonna have, yeah. We're gonna call that meeting out. Yeah, after we get to council comments and. Ms. Quintera, I think that Mr. Moreno's trying to take over the limelight here.
She could have it. So thank you, our mayor, council members. So tonight, I will give you a third quarter budget updates. We'll look at a couple of funds and go through it. Obviously, we're still finishing our budget process. We'll wrap that up over here, so I'll try to run through this as quick as I can. So looking at your, come on, you can do it. So as a measurement date, we use the general fund. We'll talk about that as far as your adopted. On June eighth, you adopted revenues of forty-seven point nine and your expenditures of forty-nine point three. So you overall did some different budget amendments throughout the fiscal year. So at the March thirty-one measurement date that we'll be utilizing here, your revenues were budgeted at forty-six point six and expenditures at fifty point three. A lot of that is variables due to the MOU increases and different factors that came through. Even some of that dollar amount actually was at transaction that they hit the reserves. So although it's built into the budget dollar amount because it doesn't flow through until the end, I like to build that number in there to see how much we can capture that. So as a benchmark, we use about seventy-five percent, so just three-fourths of the way through. So sales tax and property tax are estimated and brought in because you only receive those at different increments of time. So we bring those in to be able to capture a full three-quarters. So looking at your revenues, your budget dollar amount would be about thirty-six million. Your currently actual is about thirty-three point five. So you're seventy percent of your overall budget dollar amount. So it's a very good number for your overall. Your sales tax is still coming in stronger. Your property tax is where your measurements need to be. So expenditures, thirty-seven point seven is your benchmark. Your actual's thirty-three point four with a sixty-six percent factor. Fire being a large part of this with the labor overall cost. So your net overall gain at this point in time, again, March thirty-one measurement date, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand and seventy-one dollars. So you can see we're still gobbling up those overall expenditures, and we're still working through it as an overall balanced budget. So it goes back to the comment that, you know, we're not dipping into reserves to make sure we're staying whole as is. Okay? So these are some of the other funds. The one that I do wanna point out is really gonna be the water fund at a negative eighty-two point eight million dollars. Really, that has to do with the SRF project. That's really why that dollar's at that point. We do have the reserves to cover those dollar amounts, so it is a big project that we knew we're gonna have to take on. That concludes my presentation. Jordan, sweet. Any questions?
Questions? I just, I always get nervous when you see expenditures like going higher. For me, it's not my money, so I'd like to see it flat or at least leave a little on the table. Just, you know, that's just my personal belief.
That's why budget is a working document. We gotta watch it all the way through.
I get you. Yeah, no, but I'm thankful that we haven't spent anything that we shouldn't have spent. We're safe that way, so that's comforting to know. I know you're watching it. All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to council items for future consideration. We're going to the water thing, and we'll cover it then. Hang on, Mr. Trueller. Normally, this is just updates and we don't go to comments. Okay, council items for future consideration? I would like to see, Mr. Moreno, if you can look into refinancing the RDA. I know it's not like a huge money, but it would be nice because that's money that we can put towards the seniors mobile. All right, awesome, awesome, awesome. Councilmember comments and announcements, questions? Okay, with that, we're gonna open back the special meeting. Do you want us to grab that table, or how you wanna do this? You got it? Okay. Get your throne. It needs bigger wings, huh? Thank you, Andrew.
The table's a little uneven. Straighten it out, Andrew.
All right. So thank you. Go back into our conversation regarding budget. At this time, we're almost done, so that's the good news. We only got a couple of funds we're gonna run through here. We left off about page two fifty-one, which is the sewer fund. Again, sewer fund and water funds all have major capital improvement projects overall, so you'll end up seeing, she made it! So really, what you see within these enterprise funds is, one, obviously, we're doing the rate refinancing, so that's gonna assist the overall impact of this fund. But also, we look at a lot of capital projects and how we're gonna get those projects where they need to be. So in the water funds or the sewer fund, it's really about capital projects as well in the water fund, too, as well. Now going to page two sixty-six, which is your water fund. Obviously, we are still working through the SARWA and still getting that project taken care of. So you do see some dollars budgeted in here for that project. Again, it is a very large project, so we knew we had that for reserves to be able to make those payments. But we'll continue to go through that process and make that into a full completion. So that concludes those enterprise funds. We do have the fleet fund overall, just the standard overall budget. It does have a negative impact, but it does have a full reserve to be able to cover that. So the last packet that we have here is gonna be for the housing division. So the housing division makes up about total four different funds. You have your Standard-Sloss Housing Contortion, you have your CDBG, and you have your state home programs. You have a successor agency, the still old RDA component, and you have the home ARP funds. So are there any questions regarding these programs? So I will say for these programs here, we did not have to do an allocation of the fifty thousand dollars, which we initiated. I did assist with staff. We went through the budget and make sure that we can pull out as much admin as we can to cover the deliverables here. The main thing that you need to keep an eye on for the CDBG program is that there is a deliverable component that pays for salaries. So as long as they're doing refinancing, we can fund those positions. If they don't do the financing, we do have some issues with funding those positions and how they program. But other than that, that concludes my presentation.
Can we get a monthly update on the funds that are currently in all of the different?
Yeah, I can work that one.
Accounts, because I think there's probably close to eighteen million dollars in there. Thank you.
Questions for Director Moreno? All right, Mr. Trueller. Sorry, we just keep moving forward backward sideways. There you go.
Okay, yes, I do have a question. I have a question about the, again, the waste treatment plant. I have to pay my sewer bill, and my sewer bill has to purify the water after it goes into the sewer treatment plant. And after it's purified, we're selling it to Del Porto Canyon Water, Del Porto Water District. So I'm trying to figure out where this income, what line is showing us the income that we're making from the sales of our water to Del Porto Water District. And the only thing, I see this North Valley Regional Recycled Water. I don't know if that's sixteen million dollars. We're not getting sixteen billion dollars a year for the water, are we? Where is that water, where is our income from Del Porto Canyon reflected back in this report? So it keeps my sewer bill down in price because we're selling our treated water to them for irrigation purposes. I'm looking at page two sixty-five. I don't know if that's a page I should be looking at, but two sixty-four is actually the page.
Hang on. We're gonna have more questions, so let them. Thank you. Other questions? I'm sure you had more, didn't you, Mr. Trueller?
Well, if we're not balanced, I'm gonna go back to my American Rescue Plan Act, that we're putting this money towards the waste treatment, not waste, the waste, our refuse, our garbage rates. If we have something that's unbalanced in this budget and we need more money for, that this money could be used for, like you said, you told me that this is a legitimate expense, and we can do this. Okay, so it's illegal. I understand that. But if there's other legal expenses that are going to cause us to have debt, where we could have used this money to pay off that debt so that we could actually get some good out of it, or at least more benefit from it, the people who are getting, you know, who are getting six dollars a month, it's not a big deal to them. It's not even a big deal to me, but to have to pay more money for something is a big deal. So that would be my other question, or how are we? What other things could this money have been used for that would have reduced our city debt? Our city expense, our city debt, that's the question, I guess. What other uses is this five million, seven hundred and fourteen dollars? Could we legally use this funding for to reduce other debts in our city so that we wouldn't have to pay those?
Anybody else wishing, Mr. Bragman?
Yes, first, a little bit off subject, but thank you to the city manager for the detailed updates on the monthly updates. I took a number of them, put them on Facebook, and got a real good reaction to it. A lot of people like knowing what's happening at City Hall, what you guys are doing. So I hope you continue to do that. Okay. Going way back. Referring again to what he was talking about, ARPA. I think maybe a little bit of the confusion there, if I'm remembering right correctly from the chart, you had like four point seven million in this year's budget and then nine hundred thousand in the next year's budget. I don't think that's really quite correct. You're not spending five point six million dollars on this. At least I don't think you are. I think that four point seven million is spread out over a number of years, so maybe that's where some of the confusion is coming in. Back on page seventeen, I'm way behind the times here. Had a couple questions. Measure L, you have traffic management, about two point four million dollars available in traffic management. Could that be used for traffic calming type purposes? And I think you know why I'm asking about that, most of you. Also, I seem to remember, when I glanced through this before, or maybe I'm thinking of another thing, that there is a hundred thousand for the car license plate reader camera and software. Was that in here? So I'm almost asking, yeah, I will volunteer my tree in front of my place to where you can put one of these cameras, and we can catch a whole bunch of these people. So if that's possible, I would really like that, okay?
And you're not even gonna rent your tree?
No, I give it to you for free, and I will water it. And I will even clip some of the branches so you can get a clear view. It's actually a perfect location because I actually have been researching this on my own, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, let's close the public comment, and Mr. Moreno, we'll start back with the water treatment plant purified, selling income. Where's it showing?
Sure, it's in Fund Two Sixteen, actually, on page two sixty-four.
Two sixty-four. And we're looking at page two sixty-four, and it's where?
Top part of this, let me get back there. It's in the top part of the sheet, though.
Okay.
It actually says the name of that city.
Recycled Water Sales Garland?
Correct.
Okay.
So one of the other questions they had was regarding debt and ARPA. ARPA can't actually fund debt. It can't pay the type of obligation.
Okay, appreciate that. Page 17, Measure L, $2.4 million traffic mitigation management.
So, Measure L has multiple components, as you know. Maintenance components and some of which relate to traffic. So, this is a budgetary item that they're allocating to get the service done. Can you shift and move my Measure L dollars around? Potentially. Just looking at the budget and how they're going to utilize those funds. So, can Measure L pay for those things? Yes, they can.
All right, well, that was directing and getting some ideas. What do you need from us?
At this point, we're just going to move forward. My next step is actually to formally bring the budget back as a whole document, and we'll take it to adoption for our next, our first meeting in June.
Nice.
So, thank you. It was a pleasure building this budget with you. And just want to thank Nate Dean, the rest of my staff, and the rest of my directors, all the rest of my directors too, because it really is a process to go through. We all sit down together and we have hard conversations. Balancing the budget is not the most implicit thing to do, but...
I've seen the fire chief and police chief walk out with their head down crying. It was ugly.
He got fire trucks. He's good.
All right, well, I'm going to close this special meeting and bring it back to our regular meeting. And we have closed session, Madam Gler. What do we got?
Thank you, Mayor. Under closed session, Item A is conference with labor negotiators. California Government Code 54957.6A. And the agency designated representative is Deputy City Manager Sarah Eddy. And employee organization is the Turlock Management Association Public Safety.
Thank you very much. We will come back and announce if anything occurred. Thank you. Nothing to report. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, you ready? All right, we're ready. And we're back from closed session. Madam Clerk, we have nothing to report. We're going to adjourn, and thank you all for this evening.
Right around the corner. Look at that rotating door.